The City of Sagittuck City Council meeting for June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please join me in the plunge of lichits.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan and those online and watching later. Jamie, will you call the roll?
Anderson.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner. Muncie.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
Russ is at Charlotte's College Orientation, so was unable to join us tonight. Would somebody make a motion to excuse his absence?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes, yes.
Um, Mayor's comments, well, we were just kind of chatting about what a great weekend it was here this past weekend. Just loved everything that happened with Pride. I was saying hats off to Liz Engle and the team who pulls that off. It was really amazing and what a lot of work. You probably know that more than most, Gregory, to pull something like that off. And it just really got me to thinking about how many amazing people give their time and talent to make this community work, whether, you know, the Pride Committee, you know, C V B, April Gundy, you know, Rotary, all of our boards and committees. We just have so many people that make this a great place and some are, man, it's just, it's so great to have the energy here. So I just, you know, wanted to acknowledge all of those folks. Ryan, your comments?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, a few comments. Sagittuck Wilds is open and we've received a lot of really just excellent feedback. So I appreciate your comments at the ribbon cutting and everybody cutting that ribbon and getting it open to the public. We had one person that actually commented on social media and the way they put it was that they had indicated they had taken a walk a couple of days after it had opened and they had indicated that it's a slice of heaven is the way they put it. So beautiful piece of property, like I said, great feedback. I know we've had some folks kind of reach out with that couldn't quite find it or asking for some signage and that sort of thing. So it's something that we're evaluating. You know, being in the township, we have to follow road commission rules and township rules relates to their zoning. And the road will allow signage in the right of way. And so I can't put something right at the, you know, within that right of way area. And I'm not exactly sure where the property line's at, but I'm guessing it's pretty far back from where the road's at. And to have a sign that to be seen would involve, you know, removing some trees. And so, but we're taking a look. In the meantime, we'll get out a post that kind of indicates like an address that somebody could type into their GPS and follow. And we can post some like photos of the entrance at least to let folks know what the gate area looks like that they would go through to at least try to. Oh, but if we can place some signage and do it in a reasonable place and not cut down a bunch of trees to do it, we can, we'll certainly evaluate that, but that's kind of where that that piece is at. So it relates to, I'm going back to the top here. We had a really good and steady attendance for the open house for Maple Street. So I included a copy of those plans in your packet. We received some really good feedback from those that were in make it. Still planning on construction next year, hopefully starting in April. And folks, your constituents have questions or they still have some feedback or some concerns. John Moxey's indicated that they're welcome to reach out to him and their team will take a look and take those concerns into account as they kind of progress in their design engineering phase. Fiber improvements are coming. In fact, they should have started today. Our engineers and Scott Herbert and planning and zoning had met with the, uh, the folks that are doing the installation. This is right now, we have permits approved for west of the river. They do have some plans that they're working on east of the river, but they haven't submitted anything formally on that yet. I think they're still looking at budget for this particular year, but that work is starting. It's going to be going throughout the summer. You may see some, some, you know, those folks working in the right of way. Most of it will be directional boring, won't be a lot of excavating. So any, you know, particular touch, you know, concerning touch points, they kind of worked on through their walkthrough. But if you get questions, that that work will be ongoing. And frankly, this is going to go all the way out to Old Beach. So this is a significant, you know, improvement even for our own, you know, city facilities. That's going to open up a lot of opportunities even out there. The temporary signage at Holland and Blue Star that you voted on at your last meeting, we're still working through the permitting process, the road commission. We're willing to allow us to place a temporary sign back in that location because it is against their policy, but their board met and we're willing to at least allow the sign to return, at least on a temporary basis. So we're working on getting the zoning permits from the township. And then the township and road commission would like a more formal agreement in place to reinstall the sign. And so we're finalizing some red line changes to that and hope to have that to you at your next meeting. And then we should be able to hopefully, assuming everything lines up all right, maybe get that installed by the end of the month. That's Sagittuck Wilds. And then I wanted to thank the staff at the C V B for a second year in a row. They had reached out and said, hey, we, we see that the Rainbow Sidewalk could use a little refresh. If you guys get the paint, we're willing to spend our time and go out and do it and make that great, you know, place making place that it is brighter and freshen it up. And they did that. And so I really want to thank the C V B staff for doing that and beautify our town. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thanks, Ryan.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions. Do you want me to wait till staff report to do it?
Till they.
You can do it now if you want.
On page twenty-seven, you just talked about the frontier excavation or the frontier fiber going in. And it said that there could be some digging on Park Street. Will that mess up the whole project that we have looking forward? Are they going to put something down that then will have to be taken back out if we widen?
Nope. So all this is primarily underground or if it isn't underground, it'd be, you know, hung up on poles in the air. But it won't be something that, um, that our engineers were concerned was going to be impacted. There's not any pedestals that they're actually installing. It's actually at ground level or below. So it shouldn't be, I guess I couldn't guarantee that. I mean, if they were to install, you know, even some of their equipment in certain areas will have, like I said, kind of like a, it's like a pedestal, but it's underground. There could be some relocation that may need to occur through that, I guess, I would think maybe. So you, that is a good point, but.
And the last one on page twenty-nine, you're talking about the Blue Star Trail that you met with the township manager and discuss items needed to get a point where the project goes out for bids. Could we do a workshop or get some information out? I'm kind of behind the ball on where things are at with that in terms of what the project is and where it's going. So if we have some kind of informational piece or just get it to me how we'd like to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to, if you want to schedule something one-on-one and kind of go through more of those details, maybe that might be easiest to, because there's a lot of layers to it. So, yep.
That'll be great. I'll give you a call, thanks.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions for Ryan? Okay, um, adding to the agenda, I guess we aren't really adding, are we adding this? How do we add the special event application? Can we just make a motion to include it in the?
Yeah, I think you could choose to add it to either consent or new business. But yeah, somebody would need to make a motion to add the, the special event application for the, you know, wedding and street closure request on Main Street.
Add it to the cons, is everybody okay adding it to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Consent agenda. Okay, somebody make that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application for a wedding on Main Street to the consent agenda as item number nine E.
Second. Jamie D.
E after D?
Nine E. Isn't that what she said?
Isn't that what I said?
She said nine E.
Isn't that what it's supposed to be?
Yes.
Right.
Oh.
You say?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay. You just wanted to correct me for.
No, 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 I just thought.
Okay.
No, I didn't hear the E, that's all.
From now, we all have to go military and go Alpha, Alpha Bravo Charlie Delta Foxtrot. This will be item niner echo.
Right.
And with that, we'll take a voice vote, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Both. Us, so motion carries. Okay, then I don't think we have any guest speakers tonight. Any public comments on agenda items only? Looks like there was somebody online. Anyone online wish to make a public comment? This can be on anything related to the agenda? All right, seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda, nine A through E.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for our meeting June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Great, any questions before we vote? It's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks so much. Okay, that gets us to staff reports. We've heard from Ryan, anything else you want to add, Ryan?
No, but I'm happy to answer questions, Mayor.
All right. Any, I'm assuming no questions or they wouldn't come up, Ryan? Okay, any questions on the treasures report? Nikki's online, we do?
She is.
No? Any questions for Jamie on the clerk's report?
I have a quick one. How much does a business license cost?
Fifteen dollars.
Uh, any questions that Ryan can follow up with Luke on planning and zoning? D P W?
Just want to point out real quick on the D P W for something new. Cause we're starting in January, started tracking kind of service requests that were coming in, not the normal duties that we're necessarily doing. But if we're getting requests from a citizen for something or if we're getting missed dig requests, things that, you know, are kind of fluid and additional that, that may come in. So just to give you an idea, we're just kind of tracking it monthly to kind of show you how many requests are coming in. And that is kind of interesting. It's kind of building up as we get into summer, which, you know, makes sense. Doesn't, isn't a complete surprise. So that'll give us some good kind of trend lines going forward of, you know, we also staff up in the summertime with seasonal staff to kind of help with, with some of those needs as well. But it'll be some data that you'll see kind of on a monthly basis going forward.
Great, thanks.
This kind of opens things up. What, what are they asking for? I mean, a hundred and one requests for service.
That's a lot, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah. It, it varies. So, you know, for example, the city was at your, your meeting concerned about Bald Head Stairs. And we received an email from her as well saying, hey, the stairs at Mount Bald Head are in really rough shape. You guys need to take a look and see if there's some repairs, want the service requests that that came in or if somebody.
I wondered if there was a way to, to structure them to see if there's something we could do to eliminate, like maybe the most common one or something like that. Maybe it's not that simple, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, or, you know, some of these also, as we get more into a construction season, can also be a lot of missed dig, you know, related requests. For example, you know, Frontier, we had a lot of locations that they had, you know, D P W had to go out and mark for their work that that's upcoming as well. So we had a lot of missed dig requests, same for like when Compton was potholing in certain areas of the city to verify a lead service line. So not all of them are, you know, just like citizen requested, but, um, but I would say, you know, a good chunk of them at times. If somebody is concerned about a tree limb that's, you know, fallen or a tree that looks like it needs, you know, some attention and is concerning. And Scott's logging all of those things now, so we can kind of track those.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a quick question, question, maybe two regarding the frontier fiber pole. Is that going to put any workload on our D P W staff at all that they've set? Or they plan to pretty much do it all on their own?
They're taking care of, yeah, all the construction, other than they have marking for missed digs or if something is damaged or it's not repaired, you know, the folks may end up reaching out to us first. And then we gotta, you know, make connections and maybe follow up to make sure that things are looking the way that it should. So there's some work in that respect.
Any, any potential impact to travel patterns? Because, you know, summer, beach, going to the beach. I know they usually are off the ride, off the road when they do their drilling or boring, I should say, but.
Yeah, so they didn't anticipate any major issues like that. There wasn't going to be, definitely wasn't going to be any full street closure. If they had a tight area that they thought they're going to be blocking a lot, they were, my understanding is that they were looking at flaggers and things like that for those areas, so.
Okay. No weekend?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge. I, I know that Mr. Moxey, you know, kind of took the lead on, on addressing the concerns. And he's well aware of the sensitivities with weakened traffic. We address those a lot on like other permit requests that come in, so.
Did you say they're actually going to pull to Old Beach?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
It'd be nice that they do that in the winter, but for off-season.
Very excited about getting this as quickly as we can. The, the, the service is just abysmal there.
Oh, I, I, I think it's fantastic.
Just even, you know, like the calling, using cell through wifi is just so.
I think it's great. My only point is, is that if, if they're going out to Old Beach.
Right.
Right. They're going to be, they're going to be getting in the way of traffic. There's no, no way around it. So you'll be out there flagging on those hills and stuff. That could be a little challenging if it's a, you know, busy beach period, that's all, but.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, their, their, their teams have been very, you know, I see really good feedback and their responsiveness so far and, and, you know, willingness to address concerns as they arise. And so I think if we're seeing an issue, I, I, I think, I think we'll see some responsiveness from them to, you know, shift or, you know, do something different if we need to.
How long did they anticipate this to last?
Until August, through August.
Through August.
Yep, yep.
Great. Um, any, there wasn't anything from the police and then engineering, anything you wanted to call up from John's report? Ryan, that takes us to the board's commissions and committees. Dan? Welcome and Jamie sent around your presentation?
I'm sorry?
Jamie sent around.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's very brief tonight. This just covers the workshop meeting on the second of the month, second of June. This lovely title slide features my grandson, so.
Adorable.
Oh, that's cute. You should frame that one.
There is, he gets plenty framed. There's some purpose to it though, because they delight in giving tours over there. So if you have people in town or whatever, little kids seem to enjoy it. Really only two items from the, uh, from the workshop, one I think a little more important than the other, but neither one is catastrophic. So the next one, please, this is the update for the, what we call the South Station at Wiley Road and Blue Star Highway. This is the non-binding letter of agreement between, between the City of Douglas, City of the Village of Douglas and the Fire Service Fire District. Basically saying both parties want this to happen, going to work to try and make it happen. And we'll go from there. Neither side is bound to do anything other than to just kind of keep working at it. We, there's a small subcommittee of, of the board on it that will meet at the station with the Douglas City Council Building Committee on Thursday, Thursday after, this Thursday afternoon. So that's sort of the next thing to go through. And we continue to evaluate potential financing operations and options and whatnot. So, but progress is progress. And the second one, my only other one, is simply to let you know that the ambulance service agreement is still under development and discussion between, primarily between the chief, the chief and Mark Meyer, who owns Life Ambulance. And again, here's another one we'll, we aim, and I think both sides aim to make it happen. So some of this has been delayed just based on people's time and availability, so. And that's it, that's all I got.
All right, questions for Dan? Thanks, Dan, appreciate it. Uh, Gregory, Inner Urban Board?
I reported everything from our last meeting at our board meeting, our last board meeting. Our next meeting for Inner Urban is the seventeenth. And by then we should have plans for the expansion of our building, which I keep talking about. I want to remind everybody that we now have Narcan and we went through training on how to administer Narcan on all of our buses now. We were provided by eight free kits. So there's a, there's a kit on each bus in case we run into that kind of a problem. I thought that was kind of cool. Our hours of operation have extended this week, started last weekend. We were open Monday through Thursday, seven to seven. Friday and Saturday is seven to eleven P M. So we're late nights on Saturdays and then Sunday's nine to seven, or seven P M.
Uh, yeah.
Question for Councilman Muncie. Now that school's out, will we see the signage go up for the high school parking overflow?
Thanks for reminding me. I wanted to let you know that the free shuttle service and the signage will follow that will be the last week of June. We'll start the last week of June and run through the summer.
That's great to see them, the Jazz for Justice at the All Saints on Friday night. Their room was all over.
They had their buses with all the rainbow all over it. Yeah, Becky's really good about decorating the buses during the holidays.
That school was really cool.
And actually, late June probably makes a lot of sense because I think they're still wrapping up a few little bits and bobs at the high school parking lot. So maybe there'll actually be some, some, you know, painted lines and stuff for parking in it. It'll be the first time in a few years that there's been like the full kind of parking area available.
Right, because the construction's done.
So that should help a little bit.
And really our town, that's when it really gets thick here in town, is usually the third, fourth week of, of, of June. I know that from having the store here for many years. And I think it's because a lot of people are having weddings and graduation parties before they settle into their summer plans. So, and again, a big thank you to the C V B for their generous donation for those, for the free shuttle service. But, you know, that's, the free shuttle service is great, but again, it's only a dollar. And you can get that shuttle service anywhere on demand, no matter where you park in the area. So, and I'll repeat and remind everyone that we are out in Fenville now and out in Lake Town Township. And please take advantage of that. The more that those numbers are up, the more that we can continue to provide those services, so.
Great, thanks, Gregory. Any other questions? Okay, Joe, Cal, Cal Lake Sewer and Water?
No report today. We'll have our next meeting, I believe, on the twenty-third, so we'll be ready for the next council meeting, council give up report.
Chris, anything from?
I'm pretty fired up. I might actually have a committee meeting to go to. And we'll be going over the results of the, the survey for the no ways.
Boy, that was a like chest down the middle.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, it really was.
Classic, classic Sagittuck.
It seems, it seems divisive, it does, yeah.
Uh, I don't think the C B A has met since we last met. Russ isn't here for H T C. Any questions on planning that we can get to Luke? Oh, wait, no, you're planning.
Say same, the next, next meeting I'll have a report.
Got it. Uh, P P W?
Yes, same thing, our next meeting, June twenty-fourth, so.
Okay, and Tri-Community Non-Motorized?
I think we're pleased that we now have a fairly firm date from the tribes for their walk through and evaluation of the route. That will be August.
Awesome.
I don't know if there's anything more to add, I think that was really the highlight.
Nope, yeah, that's.
Great.
Yeah.
Uh, anything new on the water system operations contract?
Yeah, we have a red line review scheduled for this Friday. So I'm going to thank Ryan for arm wrestling whoever to get that, get that draft done. So looking forward to the discussion.
Awesome.
Look, the draft looked good, I thought, I saw.
Uh, and then Wildlife Management Committee?
Um, the Holland Sentinel's interested in the committee's work and did exchange emails with Lisa over at Douglas. She gave a rundown on, on kind of the state of play for the paper. So we're getting the word out that, you know, this is kind of reaching, you know, uh, a conclusion, hopefully. And I think, I mean, once again, I think the, um, the big news is, you know, everyone's in agreement that, you know, we have to take these hard steps. You know, this is, you know, not, you know, it's, it's not, everybody's not comfortable, you know, killing animals. But unfortunately, you know, we have no choice. There's really no viable alternatives to, to, to hunting, you know, and potentially culling. So I think there seems to be alignment among the tri-community area and the details on what the ordinances look like. I think there will be some variability as we've mentioned in previous meetings, but we're getting good interest from the local paper on it.
Chris?
I have a question. Many of our friends that go in winter go to Arizona. And when they came back, a couple of them had seen about the Wildlife Management Committee. And apparently there with the Mustangs in Arizona, they have some type of shot that they get the females so that they cannot gestate for two years. Was that any kind of an option to shoot an arrow, shoot a drug into them?
Yeah, we specifically asked that question to Don Popeye, who's the urban deer specialist at D N R, who came to present before our, our committee. And he told us that it's not been effective. Ann Arbor has thought about it for deer control. It's, it's just not an effective means to bring the herd down, so.
That was like a thousand dollars? Am I doing, I hear somebody say it was a thousand dollars of.
I don't recall the, a dollar value placed on it, but it was just, based on his experience, it was not a viable option. A similar situation to capturing and relocating the deer. No one will accept them. You know, you, you can't move them. There's really no preserve or anything you could put them on and others will just fill the habitat. Unfortunately, you know, we, you know, as Mr. Popeye said, you know, they're, they're not acting normally here because they're, they see no threats, they experience no threats. So until they feel the pressure of being, you know, pursued, they will likely continue to, to linger and spend, you know, an inordinate amount of time here and in people's gardens and in front of their cars, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, so that takes us to item eleven, approval of accounts payable.
Um, Madam Mayor? I would like to motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of one hundred eight thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
I'll second that.
Any questions before we vote? All right, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we don't have any public hearings or unfinished business, so we'll move to new business fourteen A. A resolution adopting the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And it's on page sixty-three of our packet.
It's a sample motion.
On page sixty-seven. Sixty-seven as a sample motion, okay. I'll make, I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Great.
A motion to approve resolution number two, five, zero, six, zero, nine, dash, A to adopt the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six.
Second.
You know, we've talked about the budget a couple of times, but are any questions before we vote?
Just a, just a comment, just thank you to the manager for a very good presentation at the public hearing that we had last Wednesday night.
Yes, second that. And again, thanks to all the staff that was involved in that process.
Yes.
All right, it's the roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. It takes us to the change in the city's schedule of fees, which begins on page one forty of the packet. And motion is on?
Madam Mayor, it's on one forty-one.
Okay, yep, there's the sample motion.
Uh, I move to approve resolution number two, five, zero, six, zero, nine, dash, B, approving a change in the city's schedule for fees to increase the water capital improvement charge and approve resolution number two, five, zero, six, zero, nine, dash, C, approving a change in the city's schedule of fees to increase the short-term rental license and inspection fees.
Okay. Reinspection fees.
Oh, reinspection fees.
Second?
Second, oh.
All right, any questions? I know we talked a little bit about this, any questions or, okay, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, um, that then takes us to fifteen, which is closed session to conduct the city manager's performance amount evaluation. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I would like to motion to move into a closed session pursuant to M C L fifteen point two, six, eight, A to conduct an annual personnel evaluation of the city manager.
A second?
Need a roll call vote for that.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we are back in open session. All right, we are back in open session. Coming out to just say, we had a great discussion with our city manager about his strong performance in the year and how pleased we are with all he accomplished. And we will have a resolution about his compensation for the new fiscal year at our next workshop on the eighteenth, and then to vote on, on the twenty-third. Great, cool. Uh, I think that takes us to council comments. Public, public. Public comments, I'm sorry, public comments, anyone? Can't find my agenda. Hard to find. Okay, no hands, so that closes public. Yeah, we have a letter from, yes, chickens, which was kind of her to write us. Thank you for the agenda. And then that takes us to council comments. Joe, do you want to start?
You know, not a lot, really. I will say, I drove to, over the weekend, it's nice to see the summer crowds starting to pick up, even though our weather's been kind of trying to figure out what's going on. I drove over to Baldi Saturday, I think, and I've been, I go over there a lot. I like to take my dog up, just wander around a little bit. And I was shocked at how many people were there. There wasn't a, you couldn't get a car down that road. And I guess it reinforced a couple of things to me. One, I think we did, made the right decision to push the construction after the summer. I think Council Gardener had that suggestion, it was spot on. And second, you know, as I looked at the dingy old restroom there that nobody was using, it reinforced that I think we made the right decision in that. Really good to see so many people there enjoying arguably one of the better attractions we have in our community. So that's all I had.
Great, Gregory.
Well, not much to say, other than I want to thank everybody that showed out, showed up for our annual Wishbone event last Friday. It was at the Cut Above Event Center that I M C for every year. We raised quite a bit of money, much more than last year, and, and, you know, they work with our Allegan County Shelter. We have a zero kill rate now, in case you didn't know that. We're finding homes, helping to feed pets, and, and also reclaiming over, I think it was a hundred and sixteen pets last year, and that, that means just getting them back to their original owners. Helping out hundreds of families, and it was a very necessary. We received a grant, was it two years ago now, for, for spade and neutering, and it was a very generous grant. That's what we're using for spade and neutering. But that money can only go to spade and neutering. We also facilitate the Wishbone, the, the Wishbone resale shop as well as our other services as well. So that's really where we need those dollars. Renee, Renee Draves did the live auction and raised, I know, just with the live auction, raised over fifty thousand dollars. We also had our silent auction and had a great time, so I want to thank everybody that came out for that Friday.
That's great. Thanks, Gregory.
I'll just echo what Councilman Clark said. It's really nice to see the summer crowds here, and things look like they're off to a great start, which makes me think of parking, and I think it would be worthwhile if we, if we get closer to the point, it probably can't happen this summer, but to really go through every single parking spot in town with a fine tooth comb and look where the low hanging fruit is, you know, you know, are we doing the right width between spots? You know, I think we still have the Harbor Duck parking crosshatch, you know, years later, and that's, you know.
I know.
I know, that's like, you know, that's four or five spots potentially. I, I, I do think, you know, some type of study by the engineer or some parking consultant. I, I just, in my gut, I think we probably, even without, you know, building new roads or tearing anything down, if we just did some thoughtful restriping in a few places, we could probably scare up probably a surprising number of spots, if we really look at things closely. So I, it's probably, you know, it's not the right time of year to do it, but I think it's, I think worthwhile, because, yeah, parking is an issue, you know, and we, you know, we, we did, we agreed with, with the fire department, you know, they were having trouble in some neighborhoods getting their emergency vehicles through areas where there were cars on both sides of the street. So we, I understand that, but obviously that, you know, you squeeze a balloon in one place, it's going to bulge out another way. So, you know, you know, in the name of safety, I think we did the right thing, but I think we also need to probably really go, you know, A to Z on our parking with, with, with a consultant, if it costs a few bucks, to really say, you know, if you striped this way, if you diagonal versus this, if you parallel versus that, you know, you, you might be able to find another fifty spots. I, I actually think there's probably a price there that we don't know about. It's just that we haven't looked at it in a while.
Um, yeah, like, on top of that, I look forward to hopefully having some sort of a parking committee that will be starting soon, so we can all dive into that and get that. It's got to be a top priority for sure. And before you know it, Fourth of July weekend is coming up so fast. It's only like, yeah, like three weekends, but depending on how you're looking ahead, but we'll need volunteers again for the parade route. And yeah, it's going by fast. So as much as we didn't think summer is ever going to come, next thing you know, it's Fourth of July weekend already. So just keep that in mind as far as, you know, getting in out there for volunteers to help with the parade.
I want to agree with Councilmember Dean. Whenever I drive around, I think, oh, we could get two in there. I think we all do it, and it's, it's wonderful that we, we have that issue, that there's so many people that want to come to our beautiful community. So, nice discussion. Thank you all, and good night.
Well, first I have to mention to Gregory, my cat Kevin came from Wishbone, so. Oh, that's nice.
Yes.
Fond, fond feelings for them. I thought this was great discussion. I really value, we don't always agree on stuff, but I love that we have good discussions and listen and so my heart is warm for my fellow council members. And with that, who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I could make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
So you're affiliated with Wishbone?